Go down there. It's service.
Hey, Cannon. Will you please put the view on the seal for the pre-meeting? Don't come out here. Don't, don't come out here.
Why here is?
Hey, Kevin. Please, will you have my little?
That's exactly what I'm looking for.
I just see him.
Uh, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. She's scared.
The only thing that improved about it was it's upstairs now. So that's why I heard. Cause like it's on the same floor with all the penders and I also like. And that like hurts it a little bit, but. I just, I was mad at you had your babies. It was like. Think you were shocked. I just. It is. I don't mind. I don't mind folding it. Hanging it up. I don't want to do it and I don't want to put it away.
We can hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
Okay, I still need to call the phone, right? Clean. Kathy, I still need to um, call the phone, right?
Yeah, that works better when everybody's in the room.
Okay. Is that gonna work? This room? Well, you know. There. Shut it. Just pile it. And again, I don't. Oh, whoopsie. It's like not. You start to roll this. So if you got any. We're gonna come though. I actually, I actually fold my post that way so when you open the door and sort of have it in stack, I've got everything. Are they like rolled? No, like I, I just fold them so that they're the height of the drawer. Okay. And then like all of my T-shirts are here. I can find. And we just do. Where's the call it? Call it. Yeah.
Trace it. Do you see where next to mute? It says switch audio.
So, yeah, so. You know, switch audio.
And then I think you can have it call you.
There we go. If some paper, we have to take towels. Myself, I want to wash. But away this house. You're gonna walk off with. It's. Except the top. We got all the.
Whether it's under control or not under control, whether it's put away.
Is your laundry under people?
It used to be under control. I think that's how you can tell how like, how uh intense things are in our life is like the status of the logic. It's not under control. It's in the hallway. Like the kids are over. Right now and I was rifling through for matching socks this morning. But that's, they should have like.
What's the fuck?
Um, but yeah, true. If you fold it, they just know it. So I usually just, they have like bins that come out and I just push them in there. It looks terrible, but, but. I mean, they just get rid of it. But I gotta start through and get rid of stuff. They grow so fast. I feel like there's so many shirts and things.
It's been like. It's not like you can just be like, oh, everything in here like.
Thought it'd catch on your way up to City Hall.
Yeah. I must have had my wringer turned off, but.
I used to get to like dress my kids. I wanted, and now they're both are. I'll just like. And uh, so John, Michigan stuff. And Izzy just, you know, picks whatever rainbow you can for applesauce. So. A lot of, a lot of that is useless. I'm like, maybe I should sell it. I should go to the secondhand store.
Eric, how are you?
Ever ending. It's never ending. Nothing matters. Nothing. I had this like, we should just throw every sock in our.
Philly Burger.
And start over.
I'm never eating that again.
Like everyone gets one kind of. I just, just. You guess the grand.
But yeah, yeah.
Was like, it's like so.
Sure. I mean, their little.
Be like.
Wait a minute. A thousand calories for a little.
Pink and a blue.
Burger and fry and it's small.
Yeah. You have this problem more than. My child is. Well, you probably eat.
So no longer.
He's probably. Clean. No.
Yeah, yeah. But never again.
I mean.
We've done that. Little bit. Yeah.
Can't believe the nutrition. I looked it up. I mean, I couldn't believe it, but I just like.
Yeah.
Oh, my. Eat a hundred milligrams of something. Five twenty-eight. They've got two minutes. Lou, I told, I told you this morning. Please don't, you know, don't feel obligated to come. You're in Cannon Beach. It's a beautiful day. You may come.
Like virtually?
Yeah, he's gonna, he said he's gonna try to sign on virtually, but he may.
Definitely coming down. I don't know. I'm so close. He would be a good one for the road from our away from. Oh, texture. I can miss it. It's just a pre-meeting.
And you're. Well, we'll grab her when, when we just got there.
You're probably, you might go, well. Cause I'm Japanese. I'm gonna go first.
Mary, are you gonna be at three tomorrow?
Then I'm done.
So, right. Are they gonna have a little send-off for you at three?
Oh, I don't know. Maybe.
Okay.
The Friday afternoon and no one's gonna be.
No one's gonna be there. Yeah.
That day. I know it's anyway.
Did you say you knew Anna?
Yeah, I was. I think we should go grab.
Do you know Anna Stewart too?
Oh, yeah.
You knew her for the first, cause I just saw she became managing partner.
At Talkatour, yeah. Yeah, that's a big job. I was sure.
Hey, man.
Remember if I asked if you knew Steve, shouldn't be.
Yeah.
Did I ask you that already?
No, you haven't asked me that yet. Is it a good, is it a good? I know we're not a good.
No, no. Oh, totally fine. We, I've known him since we were twelve.
Oh, wow.
In my class at Westland.
Oh, that's funny. I did. He went to, he's from Westland.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's in the natural resources division. And I was in business activities, but we crossed over a fair amount of times. And then when I was trying to parlay an office in the Portland building, I would like. Rent this office or reserve this office across from him. So I got to see them a lot because natural resources is important.
He's kind of funny.
Yeah.
Funny guy.
He's still, I still cross paths with them. I think it was, it wasn't Oregon Water Resources. It was Mary Ethyong contract. I'm working with Megan cause he represents Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. I was with him a little bit.
Did he go to, where'd he go to?
Oh, yeah.
I think locally. Yeah.
That could be. That's with the five.
Let's see which, oh, I already erased the number. He accidentally called me.
Do you need some help?
Or they. Kathy, we've got a, somebody calling into the meeting. Is that Councilor Groner?
I don't know. I've requested that they unmute, but I don't know if on a phone, if you can, uh, here it goes. Caller, are you Councilor Groner?
Yes, I am.
Hi, okay. Hi. Hi, Lou. Good to hear from you. Can you hear us okay?
Yeah, apparently Webex wants me to download a new version of Webex. And my phone is so locked down, it won't let me load a new version of Webex. I'm on audio now.
Okay, but can you can hear us okay?
Hear us okay? Yes.
Okay. Well, then are we ready to go? Who, Alyssa was right there. We'll wait.
Yeah, we're waiting.
Okay, we're ready to go. Welcome, Stephanie.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, it's all good. Uh, it is Monday, July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. I will call to order this pre-meeting. Westland City Council. Uh, we can just identify for the record of the meeting. I worry about asking mayor, we can go around the table.
Kevin Bonnington, City Councilor.
Mary Baumgartner, Council President.
Carol Bragg, City Councilor.
Lauren Bright, Health Finance Director.
Oregon's Level Support Services Supervisor.
Eric Byers, Public Order Director, City Engineer.
Stephanie Hating, um, Management Analyst.
I am.
Well, that's the President Deputy City Manager.
Haley Klein, City Attorney.
Thank you. And then Councilor Groner, here online.
Leo Groner, City Councilor.
Okay, everybody is here. Alyssa, you're acting city manager tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, hopefully John is not listening to the meeting and is enjoying his vacation. We've got a couple of uh, very fun. Uh, and awesome uh, recommend, uh, commendations for our police officers tonight with. General Johnson and uh. Paul Headley and Todd Gradwall for some of their work. General with S R Award of Excellence and the two police personnel for the solving of the cold case. That'll be great. And they have a consent agenda with a few things on it. Generally, we don't have a lot of, is there any, any questions on any consent item that would require it being pulled? We can't. Discuss it, but we could pull it and discuss it if needed.
I have none.
Okay. Very efficient tonight. Okay, so then the next, the first, the business meeting, we've got three items on it. Uh, so we, so we just go in order? Any preference?
Well, I think Stephanie's here, so would you rather her go first?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Stephanie, would you, have you been to a pre-meeting before?
No.
Okay, this is kind of the chance for council to ask any last minute questions about the topic. We just kind of have a brief overview of what's going on. Then in the meeting, we have the whole presentation, so no need to give a detailed presentation. You have any thoughts on, on the uh, correspondence that came in or in the, the issue, issues at play today?
Um, I think we received several public notices since the agenda was posted and I think that our uh. Public temple is very informed and able to answer any questions that you may have on them. Uh, I don't think that there's anything new that has come up that we haven't already discussed um, in previous meetings um, or um, with legal.
And we kind of had some one-on-ones with staff as this was developed. And just to clarify for the record for right now, we, we went with the um. Way to describe it, but the, the less risky um, prospect or code, code choice where we're not.
That was recommending, making that recommendation.
Okay.
So we added.
We're not doing a stealth tax. In other words, however they described is what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
So we added an option. Um, so there's two versions of the ordinance that are available for you to consider tonight. The first ordinance was presented back in April. Um, the second ordinance has added language to exempt non-owner wireless providers from the right-of-way usage fee.
Okay.
And that is the one that we are. And that is staff recommendation.
That's the important distinction. If you decide to go with um, exempting the wireless carriers, which are the. Like the predominant party that's raising all these questions and filing letters, you'll want to go with the one at the dash two, option two. And you'll need to read that in your motion. If you decide to go ahead with uh, uh, language that staff presented at the work session, which would increase revenue significantly for the city that does have. Some attendant um, risks and things to consider. That's option one. And really you'll want to clarify.
Okay, thank you. Any, any questions on that? Go ahead, Councilor.
Okay, option one is a low risk. Option two is a high risk. Is that correct?
No, option one is the original uh, ordinance that was presented in April. That does not have the exception, so it does come with it um, risk. Because the wire, uh, for reasons that the wireless um, providers have presented in their letters. Um, the second version is the new version of the ordinance that is considered lower risk because it exempts wireless, non-owner wireless from the right-of-way usage fee.
Thank you.
And Mary, do you have the motion? Cause I thought Kathy did a nice job of.
They're usually, they're already, I'm sure. I haven't looked, but.
Yeah, it should make that clear.
Yeah.
How to read those motion. Great.
Any question? Good clarification, Councilor Groner. Uh, there are no other questions, so. We can move on and the agenda will go back to eight A, which is the sale of surplus property at six one two three challenge. So we bring in the. Special guest, the city's Realtor?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
My computer.
Yeah, right here is good.
Thank you.
Well, we don't.
Take the hot seat. No, no. It's all good. We're glad you're here. Thank you for coming to the pre-meeting. Uh, who would like to give an overview of this? Item?
First an introduction maybe.
Oh, yeah. Would you like to introduce yourself to the council?
My name is Elizabeth Henderson. I'm the real estate agent behind Winged Sports Bus Real Estate.
Uh, and you were the listing agent for the city, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, but Eric, would you like to give a little?
Sure, yeah. Overview. So we uh, originally bought the properties. There was two, uh, sixty-one seventy-five and the one we're talking about tonight, sixty-one twenty-three. They were purchased when we uh, rebuilt the water, Bolden Water Resort. Sixty-one seventy-five was used as a job trailer. And then sixty-one twenty-three was used for staging of equipment and material. Since then, we have no use for it. Uh, there was a previous sale, uh, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. That went through uh, with Icon. Uh, ultimately fell through. We decided to do the land improvements ourselves. Had that designed on, contracted out the improvements. Had the plan recorded um, further this year finally, I believe. And so now we're wanting to. Sell the property as part of the original purchase. That's the resolution. We're selling the property, so. retaining Elizabeth services uh, in June. Maybe this is why I should, could hand it off to you or if you have specific questions.
I have a little bit on the procedural um, component. Um, we are required to have it resolution identified as a surplus property and initiate a sale. Happens already. Um, and then there's a certain notice proceeding procedure that is required to at least seven days ahead of the public hearing. Um, we must state the reason why we purchased, the reason why we are selling it. And list price and one more thing which is in here, but all of those were adhered to and they were actually published around fourteen days in advance of this meeting. So those are all um, done. Also, the resolution that cleared its surplus and initiated the sale. Um, clarify that because this property was originally purchased with water funds, um, any proceeds will go back to the water. And as you know, um, a utility fund can only then use revenues and proceeds for purposes related to the water fund. So any revenues from this sale. Restricted for use by the water fund exclusively. Um, so that is some just procedural background. Um, let you know, and you know, Elizabeth can answer any of the specific real estate transaction prop, uh, questions you may have. We can answer any question that may have been raised um, with regard to the previous sale, um, land application and engineering review that took place. Prior to Icon terminating the sales agreement in two thousand nineteen.
And I thought you may have some questions given that letter we received from Icon. So I thought it'd be great for Elizabeth to just recap for you. So it's all, you know. Um, who would like a recap of um, her process in terms of what she requested, when the deadline was and, you know, clarifying that there was um, equal access and the same information to all. All um, applicants, so.
And just for the record, we might have you repeat this during the regular meeting.
Okay.
Out there.
Okay.
You might.
So everybody has a multiple offer summary. Is that an option in view? So it was a very simple, straightforward process and it is lovely that it was that way because it makes this spreadsheet um, easy for me to refer. So I did add a note because it is of importance and um, typically in other sales, not of public record, I don't note to this detail, but this one, I have added it. Where the first offer was received at ten oh two P M on the fifth. And then the second and third offered, the second offer came in at eight thirty-nine A M and then the third offer came in at nine thirty-five. And what makes this a clear shot is that it's fair and competitive market response to the offer, to the, to the list price that it was put out to the public and everybody had. Over five days, you know, and I tried to make it over a weekend, but then also business days so that depending if people are out of town or who's responding, if it's a business S and P or. A private party, they have plenty of opportunity to get an offer in. So that made it just dissolve purely to the sale of terms and the strategies, which were nice to see. That they elevated so quickly and how they did it. And so I'd love to speak for that if there's any specific questions. I don't want to go too far down the wrong road by explaining too much that.
Can you know what you requested? Like what was posted or what people were responding to?
So in the R M L S, it's pretty, it's pretty standardized under private and public comments. And so agents. Have access to both of these and that's where I put it. Um, there's a screenshot, you know. Where it says offer deadline Tuesday, June tenth at ten A M. And I actually put it in caps, offer deadline. So that's, and then that was published on six, six. At three forty-five P M. Which I think that was, that is Thursday, six, six. So that was Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Wednesday. So that was hopefully that timeline. So from that, there were no side conversations, emails, texts, any communication that put anybody in knowledge that anybody else did or didn't have. And that makes it super clean and easy for me because I can't remember all the side conversations. So I just don't have any. And the beauty of that by law. Is that I'm not allowed to disclose anything about any term or condition of any offer unless I'm given specific permission to do so. So that makes it easy for me to tell agents, I don't have permission to disclose that. No, I don't have permission to. It makes it easy. So beyond that, then the process was to review everything that was submitted on Tuesday at ten. I think it took me about. Day and then after do that. And I just put all the terms in the spreadsheet of notes. And then I break it down to the offer net. And then I even wanted to share some of the communication notes with me so that you get a true representation of. How they presented the offer, the strategy employed, what they shared that was significant and of importance to them. So that even though this is just a summary spreadsheet, you get a true feel of what's presented and how.
I'll say that I have interrogated her and I feel bad about that at this point. We've talked for well over an hour about that. Being her process was very methodical. I've looked at all of this on R M L S myself. Very confident and I don't think I would have done a better job either. So. Very good work. Thank you.
I'd love to continue to point out a few terms that um, have, have maybe, maybe made some people pause as, wow, that's crazy that that number ended up there and that's ended up here. And it's just a market response and how it was done. And can I have a minute?
Please.
Okay. So there's two specific terms and what I could do really quick, and I'm prepared to speak to the Icon offer. Um, is that a good time to do that or wait?
Are you talking about the letter that came in?
Yes.
Sure. I mean, we, we got put in. I'm not, this person is a real estate professional.
She's well aware.
So we've been talking about. We had the process, the bid, the bidding process that, that was done and that you've described. And then after that closed and then. After that closed, we now received a letter with what I perceive to be some objections to the process or, and then a specific request to continue that. I don't know how to handle that as a non-real estate person.
You can kind of narrow it down. So I read the letter and I understand each of his points. It's easy to address and that um. If I go specific to the first point, he doesn't like the fact that there was a escalation clause and. Maybe an easier way to look at this is this is for a private sale. You're gonna want everybody to do the best job they can before an offer deadline. But then after the offer deadline, typically it's not made public for anybody to see. So they can go back and say, oh, he employed that strategy and that strategy and whoa, they did that. Okay, hold up. Wait, now I want a chance to do that. We don't usually do that with. This out to the public where now any offer can look at anybody else's and say, oh, I missed that opportunity. I missed that. Well, wait a minute. I want to try again too. Isn't a fair approach.
Something that's getting at it, extending the process or changing the process from what was already laid out.
Well, so the first escalation clause was unfairly, there was nothing in the procedure that said you couldn't use an escalation clause. It just said offer deadline. So I did that intentionally, show us the best of what the public can bring to the table. All, all things the best. And so that's the first point. And. An escalation clause is the strategy that somebody would use when they don't know how competitive it will be. And when they can't get information and don't, you know, I don't know if I have to be above this or if I have to be above this. They're gonna put a blanket statement out and say, I'm gonna be this competitive to twenty-one thousand over the best offer because I don't know where the next offer is. So that makes sense to me and, you know, they use that term in addition to. Supposed to offer number three, Icon, they brought in what they call the non-monetary benefit was, which was the negotiation period for one, seven, nine, three, eight. So that you could, you know, if offer number two, or let's come back and make all changes, maybe they would pull in a different, you know, it could make it very messy. Um, the next one of the point.
Can I ask a quick question? So the escalation clause is not uncalled.
No, not at all.
It's not. One of the questions was, is it not permissible in this type of sale? I'm saying it.
No, I.
Common practice and it's a lot.
Welcomes everything that intentionally did the highest of best. Um, so the next part that I do want to speak to because between the escalation clause and the fact that they, and they didn't waive, and so this letter says. Uh, poor block of town, they waived the buyer broker two point five commission. It wasn't waived. It was intentionally the decision made to not ask for one. And so the N A R settlement that happened on August seventeenth of twenty twenty-two eliminates me from putting any offer of fire agent compensation into the R M L S. So the R M L S that was shared out to everybody no longer has any offer of compensation or what used to be called B A, the fire agent commission. No longer allowed. So there was no percentage offered and offer number two specifically. No, specifically just didn't ask for any contribution. So that zero amount combined with the twenty-one thousand. So that zero amount combined with the 21,000 was what netted them that 826,350. So I'm impressed in that they use a new legislation that was passed within our offer terms as a strategy to make their offer more competitive. So to put it, to honor or try to open up this process for a special option for one of the builders is eliminating the strategy that got them where they are here, which was a natural progression of the sale process. Probably laboring the point too much, but to me, it's a very clear, they came to the table with the best parts initially. And it makes, so why I bring that up is because there was the question of, "Oh, so that 805 number plus the 21,000 escalation equals 826,350." And offer number three came in at 826. Though it ended up being a close number, but I can see the progression of how it happened because they didn't ask for compensation. Offer number three did ask for compensation, but they came up with that amount that they asked. It was not published in the RMLAS. So they could have asked for two, they could have asked for 2.7. Does that number combined with the 21,000 ended up falling at 826,350? So that was kind of a happenstance. There's a clear path of how it happened.
Questions or comments?
I'm not hearing Leo. I don't know if he's trying to talk. Did you have a question, Councilor Groner?
Uh, yes, that 826 number, is that for one of the properties or both of the properties?
It's for three lots, I believe.
It's the total.
Anything else? Okay, I see nothing else on that, so we can.
So one other just procedural point I wanted to make on this. So the code requires notice in the public hearing, so we'll hold a public hearing. And I know you've done that plenty of times to make sure when you get to this agenda item, I would open, mention that you're opening the public hearing, bang the gavel, and then have staff provide their report. And if you have any questions of the staff report, ask them then. And then go ahead and open it up for public testimony. And then that's when you can go back to staff and say, you know, "Are there any points you would like to make in response to the public testimony you heard?" And then you close the public hearing and you begin your deliberation. I think I sat in one and closed the public hearing and then there were subsequent questions of staff. And so if they're really just procedural or very minor, I missed the last name of this person for the record, that's fine, but if you're going to ask a substantive or factual question, you're going to need to reopen the hearing. So just think about that as you progress through to try and capture everything in the record before you close it.
Thank you. We have one more item on here. I think it's the transient lodging taxes ordinance.
Yes, and this one's very simple and easy, hopefully. As you remember, we've updated this section of the code a few times now. Basically what we're trying to do is make it so that the state or the Department of Revenue can collect our transient lodging taxes on our behalf. And we actually already approved, the council has already approved the IDA with that. However, when they went back to implement the IDA, they noticed that our code said that we collect them on a monthly basis and they only collect quarterly basis. So therefore, they couldn't implement the IDA because it wouldn't be compliant with our code. So we are just changing monthly, quarterly in this code. Was there any other, there were no other changes within, Kaylee?
I feel like maybe, if they were, they were pretty not majorly substantive worth calling out.
Good. Something simple.
Yeah, very simple.
Yeah, so the way in which they collect the taxes quarterly, they just gave me these. So I dropped that in here and then made it import with the language we use, like we use operator. So I just made sure it was consistent and would mesh with the existing definitions we have. Yep.
Robust city manager reports. Okay, we're adjourned, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you virtually on the other meeting.
Lou, you can stay on, that's same, same, same meeting room. Okay.
Do you leave him like that? Or do you, I think we turned this off down here, don't we?
I think it's the same stream.
I don't know.
They can get him upstairs, I think.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
It was that amount.
I found a comparable, other point, two other questions. If we could look at that. Possible for a fact. Then the whole block. So we have more ocean.
Yeah, that's true.
Are we ready to go on the staff side? Kevin, are we ready in the back? Thank you. Oh, Councilor Groner, could you just mute yourself on your phone when, when not speaking? Uh, Councilor Groner, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, would you mind muting yourself when you're not speaking? We're getting a little bit of feedback from your phone.
Okay, I'll do that right now.
Thanks. And thank you for being here. Hope you're enjoying the coast. And with that, we can call this meeting to order. We're ready. This is the Monday, July 14th, 2025 Business Meeting of the City Council. And we are going to move the two Police Department awards to the beginning of the agenda because we have some folks here on active duty today. So that's going to be the council president's motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the July 14th, 2025 Westland City Council meeting, moving items four and five to the beginning of the agenda before public comment.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda, moving items four and five to before public comment. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I will call the roll.
Councilor Bonnington?
Yes.
Councilor Bright?
Yes.
Council President Bumgardner?
Yes.
Councilor Groner?
Yeah.
Mayor Billisnowski?
Yes, thank you. So the agenda is approved. And I know we've got four folks signed up for public comment. We'll get to you folks in just a few minutes, but wanted to, in case a call comes in or something, make sure we get the Police Department folks out of here. So welcome up Chief Mahuna. We've got two items on the agenda, the Recognizing Officer Jibrell Johnson for the receiving the National School Resource Officer Award of Excellence. And then Recognizing Evidence Technician Nicole Headley and Detective Sergeant Todd Gradwall with the Commendation Award for their work solving Westland's oldest homicide cold case in the last couple of weeks. Probably saw that in the news. So I'll turn it over to Chief Mahuna for the introduction and thank you for being here.
Mayor, thanks for having me. Council President, Council, thanks for having me. As I've said before, when I give, I get to give awards at this, at the City Council meetings, it's the best part of my job, recognize the great work that our people are doing. As you all know, Jibrell Johnson has been our SRO here in Westland for the last four years. And in addition to being recognized by the school and the community very, very often and he's earned all the accolades that he's got. But recently, in July 7th of this year, he was invited down to the National Association of School Resource Officer Convention in Dallas, Texas, to be recognized as the Region Nine Exceptional Service Award. Now, Region Nine encompasses Oregon, Washington, California, Nevada, Hawaii, and Alaska. So of all of those regions are attended in the whole country, Jibrell Johnson is one of the 10 officers in the whole country that got this award. So this is, this is huge for us. And so I wanted to bring Officer Johnson up, give him his award again in front of everybody and recognize his fabulous work. And then our second award, we'll do photos after, if that's okay with you. I'm just going to read the press release that we did on this case because I think it encompasses all the fantastic work that we did on this case. "Thanks for the exceptional investigative work of members of the Western Police Department. A 46-year-old homicide case has been brought to a close. The case involved the murder of a 20-year-old Diana Kuhn in December of 1978 had remained unsolved, was recently reopened after another review of the cold case. During reassessment of the case file, the potential for more investigation was recognized and a more in-depth follow-up was conducted. WLPD Sergeant Detective Todd Gradwall." In fact, can you come up here, Todd and Nicole? Sorry, I should have done that first.
Welcome up, Todd and Nicole.
Thank you. Sorry, I should have done that first. "Performed a comprehensive review of all available reports and investigative records." Now, these are from 1978, so this is, this is a pretty big case file. "Simultaneously, case materials, including physical evidence and photographs, were reexamined by WLPD Property and Evidence Technician Nicole Headley. It was during this reexamination that a critical piece of evidence that had not been previously tested was discovered and submitted to the Oregon State Police Crime Lab by Headley, which proved instrumental in advancing this case and ultimately led to key breakthroughs through DNA. Through DNA, previously identified person of interest was confirmed to be the suspect in the homicide. The identified suspect, David Lawrence Atkinson, died in February of 1989. The case was forwarded to the Clackamas County District Attorney's Office for review. The DA's office strongly believes that if Mr. Atkinson were alive today, he would be indicted, tried, and subsequently convicted on charges of the sexual assault and aggravated murder of Ms. Kuhn. The Western Police Department applauds the professionalism and dedication shown by Detective Sergeant Gradwall and Property and Evidence Technician Headley throughout this investigation. This case serves as a powerful example of how persistence, teamwork, and modern investigative methods can breathe new life into old cases and deliver long overdue justice. Congratulations."
Chief, would like group photo? Thank you, Chief Mahuna, members of the Police Department as well. I'm at a loss for words after that, learning about that. All three of those people are wonderful. So with that, we can move now to public comment. I know we have several folks sign up to speak tonight.
Shannon Knight and Beau Geno.
Hi, Shannon, welcome. Beau, nice to see you again.
Hello, hello.
Go ahead and state your, are you giving kind of a joint comment or?
Pretty much.
Okay, just state your names and city residences and then.
Beau Geno, Westland, Chair, CCI.
Shannon Knight, Westland, Vice Chair, CCI.
On March 6th, the committee sent a letter to the City Council that we think may have gotten misconstrued as a desire to reshape the neighborhood associations, whereas our intent was to present a plan to, of marketing and outreach to help the NAs grow their membership. Through that, we hope to gather information from the public about how to better utilize the NAs. the NAs in the future. We threw a lot of ideas and proposals at the wall, City Council being the wall, in the hopes that we would hear from you in time to get a plan in place to take advantage of the summer market and the concerts and the films. I don't want to alarm the children or excite the parents, but summer is halfway over. And so we've missed a bit of an opportunity for outreach. And so we just wanted to come here and just make sure that you knew what our hopes and goals were.
Yeah, so yeah, we just submit, just in our upcoming meetings, we just need stuff to work on, and we're kind of in limbo, waiting for Council to approve this plan so that we can work on it. And so now, I think we submitted it early so that we were hoping that we could, you know, do some outreach with the summer, and now that it's kind of winding down, we were just hoping that we could get some kind of yes or no whether to work, go forward on this work plan so that we could maybe at our July meeting, focus on that and maybe be able to do some outreach for the last month of August with some last, like Movies in the Park and last couple events that are still available before. We would lose those opportunities. So that's, was our plan, was just to see if you guys can give a yay or nay so we know where we're going.
I mean, our name is the Committee for Community Outreach. We want to do some community outreach.
Yeah. And it is just a marketing plan. Like, all our thing is just to explain to the people what neighborhood associations are, how to get involved, where they are, you know, when they are, that they're not HOAs, because everyone thinks they're HOAs. So it's more just getting information out, was it?
Exactly. And now that our goal is not so focused as much on land use, sending the, our citizens to the neighborhood associations is their ticket to know what's happening in their community, because we're not doing that anymore.
Well, thank you for those comments, and we're glad you're here and glad you want to be involved, helping inform the community. Any thoughts from the Council? I need to take a moment to review the submittal that, with your proposed work plan. Alyssa, do you have any thoughts? You look like you were about to jump in. Sorry to put you on the spot. But when it, let me start here. When is your upcoming meeting for the CCI?
Tomorrow.
It is already?
Yeah.
It's like, usually like the fourth week of the month, but I was like, July's almost over.
I wasn't, I wasn't joking.
Okay.
So the August 4th meeting does have an agenda item for work plans for CAGs, and I believe that your staff liaison and your council liaison, we're going to be working on a work plan. The Council wants every community advisory group to have a work plan. So I believe that this CCI is going to be first step for August 4th.
Okay. And council liaison, and do you have any thoughts?
No.
On that?
Sounds good.
Is that an okay date if we get it on August 4th to you for?
Yeah, I mean, we'd probably miss all this stuff, but I mean, it gives us something to work on for the rest of the year, I guess.
Okay. If that's okay, well, we've got it scheduled, so we'll, we'll talk about it then and hopefully get those approved.
And the intent is that the work plan actually gets you all the way through next year as well.
Okay.
And we will, I'm glad you reminded us about the submittal you previously made. We'll review that in advance of the meeting and make sure it aligns as much as possible.
Sounds good.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. And Shannon, good work on the water ski spectacular as well. Oh, something at the, in the fair, we saw that.
Kathy Halakie?
Welcome, Kathy. State your name and city residence, and?
Kathy Halakie.
Here on behalf of the WNA?
Yes.
Okay, we'll give you a?
Willamette Neighborhood Association President. "Mr. Mayor and City Council, upon review, upon viewing the Planning Commission meeting of June 18th, 2025, minute 20:40, the WNA Board and members have grave concerns. This was per Darren Weiss's presentation, and our voices are being curtailed or silenced yet again. We realize that some of the changes are state mandated and that you have no control over them. Our issue is of the items that will now be added to the planning manager decision. Many feel that the planning manager makes too many decisions as it is. This reduces the ability of the residents to give their input. The comment that at the PC, I'm sorry, at the Planning Commission meeting was, pay more attention at the pre-app. Since there will be no pub, since there will be no public hearings, we have all seen how pre-apps can look like an apple, but once the planning department, the developer get involved, said projects look more like a banana. So it's not at all what we're presenting. Yes, they're both fruit, but not the same. We find this also to be true at times when a developer makes a presentation to the NA. Reducing or eliminating public input, even changing from verbal to written only, is not acceptable. We have witnessed, back in the day, when written testimony went missing and is not included in your packets. Those of us who give oral testimony want to make sure their comments are part of the public record. You have already emasculated the Historic Review Board by changing them from quasi-judicial to an advisory board. Now you'll be removing some of the projects that normally go before the Planning Commission and making them planning manager decisions. All appeals will go straight before you, bypassing the Planning Commission, thus eliminating another chance for public input. Then, one of the mandates is that testimony can only be in writing, not verbal. Luba will also be bypassed. Another chance for a correction in a decision made, nullified. CCI also feels that their input has been restricted and/or ignored. These changes should have been brought before NAP, before anything was presented to the Planning Commission. This has not been done. Neighborhood associations provide a vital link between the residents and the city decision makers. Our purpose is to be the conduit for the city information to the neighborhoods and to provide the city with residents' needs and concerns. NAs want to continue to be included in discussions and not lose this opportunity. Otherwise, the quality of our neighborhood is at risk. I guess the question is whether or not you want the public's input. Kathy Halakie, WNA President, WNA Board and Membership.
Thank you for your comments. We, I'd say we definitely do want to hear from the public and value public input. I still have to familiarize myself, excuse me, with the, what the Planning Commission was talking about in June. We haven't been briefed on that as a City Council. So we will look at that.
Watch it, go to minute 20 and 40 seconds, and start there.
I will, I'll do that, and I don't know if the Council President has a follow-up.
Well, I just, I just, thank you for the comment. I just wanted to make a clarification. Have we changed the role of the Historic Review Board? As noted by the comment that the Historic Review Board is no longer quasi-judicial?
That's what we've been told.
I'm, let me just, give me a minute and ask our staff. We, to my knowledge, there has been no change to the Historic Review Board's quasi-judicial decision-making processes.
I'm not aware either, but I'd have to look into it.
I don't think that's actually accurate. Who told you what, where did that information come from?
Ex-member of the Historic Review Board.
I see. Well, I think it's not technically accurate, so.
And that's part of the communication thing, that it would be better if we would hear things from those who know than to get it third party, and then we can squash said rumors.
Did you send your comment to us ahead of time?
I did not.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I'm, look forward to being able to address it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Halakie. And I will review that Planning Commission meeting soon. And I'm sure we'll get briefed on the policy issues as well that were raised. Council Bright, please.
As the liaison to the Planning Commission, I was at that meeting, and there are certainly some concerns, and much of what was discussed were changes in the state law that require us, we must do this. Some of the things that the city had been doing were more permissive and broader, and the state has said, no, it's, you're limited to this. So we need to look into it further. We need to perhaps lobby the state to, to see if there's any way that can be changed or any wiggle room that we have.
Thank you for that comment. State mandates keep coming down on the city, yeah. How many more speakers do we have?
Dean, sir.
Is this, oh, one more, okay, just checking for the right. Come on up, Dean. Welcome back. And state your name and city residence and take it away.
Yeah, it's been a little while. Dean, sir, Westland, Miles Drive. Thank you all for your continued service and all the many things that you juggle. I wanted to briefly mention three things tonight, mostly for update, and there's one quick ask. The 9/11 Honoring Those Who Serve event, I just got a confirmation from the Air National Guard. They're not going to do a flyover this year. We've been trying for years to get that to happen, so it's going to be in the afternoon of Thursday, 9/11, and we'll be sending an invitation to all of you for that. Want to plant a seed, though, as we're looking forward to 2026, the 25th anniversary, we'll be back at the Willamette Park. How can we continue to include Oregon City? This year, we'll go back to the bridge again, but if we want to keep Oregon City, we should be talking about that. Briefly, a comment about tolling. Tolls are still coming. Tolls were deferred by the governor in 2024. They were paused, but they were not halted. And if you remember, the mayor's analysis of 86% overhead, that has, that number has not changed, to my knowledge. The failure of House Bill 2025, which was the $14 billion, trimmed down to $12 billion transportation package, created some concerns that I'm sure you're aware of. One of the last-minute efforts by some of our leaders down there was to fund ODOT without the 50-30-20 split that gives the city transportation dollars. I feel like that makes tolling an easier lever for the government and some of our leaders to pull. So I just wanted to remind you that IP 31 is the 2026 version of Vote Before Tolls. We're out gathering signatures for that. This measure is not a no on tolls. It gives the citizens the right to vote on tolls, and the emphasis of it is that it would cause accountability and ideally collaboration upfront, so they come up with packages and proposals if they want to pursue tolling that makes sense. I'd like to ask the city to consider, as they did back in 2024 or 2023, where you stand on IP 31, and if you would take a public stance on that. I think that's important. We start to get the visibility up and increase it with the citizens to get signatures. I've been talking with the mayor about partnering with C4 and so on on that. And then finally, just a brief comment about Oppenlander. As I'm sure most of you know, I've worn that hat for a long time. The school district has opened the bids. There are three bids in play, or three bids proposed. Looks like the Icon bid is in, in good standing. We won't know until the school board votes next month. But that does bring up some issues that we should be thinking about probably a little proactively. Number one is how would we fund that if we were to still participate with Icon in presumably that same plan that they presented last winter or early spring would be there? The use of the $3.5 million bond from 2022, right? Yeah, May of 2022. There's some concerns about that relative to using those funds to buy less than 10 acres of Oppenlander, or to be left with less than 10 acres. We need a public statement and then a plan to move forward on that. If we're going to pursue this, there's going to be a funding challenge that we need to solve. And does that include Oppenlander as a standalone, or Oppenlander rolled in with some other activities and so on? I'd love to be engaged on that. And then we are still pursuing. We have to reform the group that was looking at helping to contribute some private funds into this project so we could expand either the acreage use for the fields. There's some interest now in acquiring one or two of the lots on the Icon drawing that have trees on them. So we haven't quite sorted that out, but we're continuing down that path. So thank you. Look forward to working with you on all of that.
Thank you, Dean. You're a very involved guy, and many, wear many different hats. We look forward to the event in a couple months at the Arch Bridge. Any other, any follow-up comments for Dean, sir, Council? Okay. Well, seeing no, any other public comments tonight? Okay. Well, we can then move on to mayor and council reports, the reports from community advisory groups. Any reports from the last week? Council Bright, please.
I attended the Water Environmental Services Advisory Committee meeting. We got an update on what they're doing to ensure rate affordability for their customers, as well as an update on their capital projects, kind of a look back, how did we do? And then looking forward, some of the projects that are coming up. I did have a lovely weekend, spent it some time at the Old Time Fair, enjoyed watching part of the historic baseball game and participating in the parade. And then on Sunday, I did a little bit of trash pickup and weed pulling in front of Marius Young, but sadly, I was there by myself, but it was really hot, so I know why everybody stayed home.
Thank you for that report. And Councilor Baumgartner, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the fair was wonderful, as always. It's very reliable entertainment, although pretty hot. And, let's see, I went today to the, a subcommittee meeting for Willamette Falls and Landings Heritage Area Coalition, and the work continues, but there are exciting developments still happening, and so I look forward to reporting further on them. That is all.
Thank you for that. Council Bonnington, anything to report?
Yeah, the Parks Board met on the 10th. The commercial use, it was actually more nuanced than that. That code has been developed, and that was kind of presented for feedback to them, so I imagine we'll be seeing that pretty soon. There were also a number of concerned public comments at that meeting that we would, for whatever reason, be reopening the pickleball discussion. And I didn't get a chance to say anything to them at the time, but to my knowledge, we have not talked about that whatsoever, or directed Parks Board to bring that up, so.
Do you, do you have anything to report? No worries if not?
Yeah, really enjoyed the Old Time Fair, enjoyed the parade and the big crowd of people waving, and enjoyed serving lots of burgers, for lots of the fair growers. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Because he served some, a lot of lion burgers at the fair, that's great. And I know that, sorry I couldn't be there, I was at a family reunion at the coast, but I know City Council enjoyed walking together and riding together in the fair in a very nice convertible that one of the city councils happens to have. So thank, thank you for that, and I'm glad you all had a good time. I did make it down to the fair on Sunday afternoon to partake, although it was very hot all weekend long, so I'm sure the late evening times were very popular. Anyhow, and I've got to give a shout out real quick to the Parks and Recreation Department staff, who were there all weekend long, putting that event on. So it was a presounding success, I think. And of course, the Police Department staff as well for being down there, staffing the fair. Anything else on any other reports, city business or anything? Okay. With that, we can move on to the consent agenda, which includes four items tonight. Is there any objection to any item on the consent agenda that would require removing it for discussion? I always ask that. Okay, seeing none, we can take a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda for the July 14th, 2025 Westland City Council meeting, which includes the June 16th and June 23rd, 2025 meeting minutes, intergovernmental agreement with the state of Oregon regarding Willamette Falls Drive, 16th Street to Osterman Road pedestrian bike upgrades, Resolution 2025-09, extending the term of the cable television franchise with Comcast of Oregon, Two Incorporated, to enable the Metropolitan Area Communications Commission to complete the informal renewal process, and the Letter of Support for the Housing Planning Assistance Grant application.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the July 14th, 2025 City Council meeting, including June 16th and 23rd meeting minutes, intergovernmental agreement with the state of Oregon regarding Willamette Falls Drive- Intergovernmental agreement with the state of Oregon regarding Willamette Falls Drive, Sixteenth Street to Ossman Road pedestrian bike upgrades. Resolution twenty twenty five oh nine extending the term of the cable television franchise with Comcast of Oregon to enable the Metropolitan Area Communications Commission to complete the informal renewal process and a letter of support for the Housing Planning Assistance Grant application. Please call the roll.
Counselor Bright?
Yes.
Counsel President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counsel Groner?
Yes.
Counsel Bonnington?
Yes.
Mayor Bielski?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Efficient use of the consent agenda. Thank you, Kathy, for your work on the meeting notes, as always. And with that, we can move on. I'm sure we're going to take a quick, we'll just take a one minute recess here to get our staff for the agenda bill coming up, the Skyline Drive property. We're in recess. Well, they're not here. Or Harles. Is it Icon or who is? Okay. Well.
We got it.
Okay, we are back in session. Thank you, everybody. So the, I don't know if I have a no script for the public hearing, correct? Just go off of my, do the usual thing that I usually, okay. Okay, so we're going to agenda item eight A twenty five twenty twenty five oh seven fourteen oh five, a public hearing for the sale of real surplus property at six one two three Skyline Drive. We have a public hearing to to hold. So I am first going to open the public hearing. And then we'll begin, I think, with a staff report from Public Works Director Eric Leis, and then we have our city Realtor here as well as a special guest who will introduce herself. And then we can take public comment and then have a council discussion. And I think we do have a member of the public signed up to speak tonight. I saw that. So we'll get to you in just a minute. We'll start with the staff report. So please.
All right, Mayor, councilors, thanks for having us tonight. Eric Leis, Public Works Director and city engineer here to introduce the sale of sixty one twenty three Skyline Drive. A little bit of background, the city purchased the property in twenty fifteen as part of the Bolton Reservoir. There was adjacent property that was purchased as well, sixty one seventy five. That had a double wide manufactured home on it that was used for the job trailer of the reservoir. Sixty one twenty three also had a single family residence that was demolished to make room for storage and is basically a lay down yard for construction during the reservoir. The purchased property was approved through Resolution two zero one five dash oh two, which states the city council authorizes the purchase of these properties with the intent to surplus and sell the properties after the Bolton Reservoir replacement is completed. Any proceeds received from the future sale of the properties would be deposited into the water fund. The property was declared surplus and approved for future sale by city council through Resolution two zero one eight dash oh three on January eighth, two thousand eighteen. The city listed the property for sale on June sixth, twenty twenty five for six hundred and seventy thousand dollars as recommended by the city's Realtor via a comprehensive market analysis report. The city received its first offer within one day of the listing and was informed by other interested parties that additional offers would be submitted. In response to the multiple, to a multiple offer scenario, the city set a deadline for final offers to be submitted and reviewed by Tuesday, June tenth, twenty twenty five. The city received three offers in total, which are summarized and attached with this report. The best and highest offer was received by the Portlock Company LLC, which included an escalation clause of twenty one thousand dollars. No seller paid commission, no seller represented utility requirements, and no request for land use or building permit approval ahead of closing of sale. The total offer is equal to eight hundred and twenty six thousand three hundred fifty dollars. Any questions on any of that?
Any questions from the city council at this time on the space? No, I don't think so.
So do I go into the options or do I open to see? That's basically my summary report. So does he then open up the?
The public hearing's been already opened. We, I think we can transition to Elizabeth, right? Is that, yeah, to kind of, we had our, the pre meeting earlier and had a conversation. Would you like to introduce yourself and kind of go through what you already went over with the city council?
Yes, my name is Elizabeth Henderson, Wings Northwest Real Estate, and the process was to get the best offer, and the market responded and three offers came in from local builders. And because of the offer deadline, it looks like they were strategically positioned, and the strongest offer decided to use the terms within the offer to not request seller contribution. And they added a term, this is offer number two that I'm referring to, to escalate. So then the seller net was eight hundred and twenty six thousand three hundred and fifty, which was the highest offer. So I can speak to details on that.
Any? Would people like more detail on the, from the staff report or how, how's the council feeling about what's?
Did we get an explanation of what escalating?
Counsel Groner asked for an explanation of what an escalation clause is and what it means in this context.
So escalation clause.
Okay, is that? Okay. I can get closer. Is that good? Yes, so escalation clauses are not new. Although I've lived in Westland for, I guess, over twenty near twenty years now. I am from California, and they were common in California, and they kind of trickled up here. And what it says is, we don't know how competitive a situation or a bidding war or a multiple offer situation may be. So with a lack of information knowing, they're going to say, how do I put my best foot forward if I only get one shot? So they choose a number to escalate over where the next best offer may fall. And where that's important is that it's based off of the next best offer's net. So in the offer summary, I took out the twenty one thousand, well, sorry, first, I took out the twenty thousand six hundred and fifty because the net would be eight oh five three fifty of offer number three. So that's how, when you look at the offer net under offer number two, you see eight oh five three fifty. That's would be the offer net from number three, then add the escalation of twenty one thousand. And that results with the eight twenty six three fifty. So that escalation, oh, sorry.
Thank you.
He just said, thank you.
Well, so that escalation is just half of the story, though. The other significant part that made offer two especially competitive was that they used the offer term in the offer, and let me note it here specifically. So on August seventeenth, the NAR had a ruling that changed how we do real estate. And so we can't publish in the RMLS a buyer agent commission. It's nowhere to be found. And so what's compelling about offer number two is they were pretty strategic in saying, okay, instead of asking the seller to pay a buyer agent compensation, we're not going to ask for that. And so that's where that twenty thousand six hundred and fifty became a factor in combination with the escalation clause to result in the eight twenty six. So it's not just the escalation clause, it's the fact that they used a variable in the offer by not asking for the seller to pay for a buyer agent compensation. And that's a new term that happened since August seventeenth of twenty twenty four that that compensation has to be decided from the buyer and their, the buyer's agent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the city council? Counselor Bonnington, please. You look like you have one.
Yeah, sort of for worth bringing up. In your experience, if if a seller is not going to entertain escalation clauses, have you seen that indicated in the RMLS remarks ahead of time? And it's it's well understood that that's either not happening and presumably allowed if that's not indicated, right?
Yeah, yes. So there's several ways to do it. Where if you have a conversation with your seller client ahead, are you not wanting to receive escalation clauses? And then you explain the pro con to why wouldn't you? And so if there's that conversation ahead, then that could be published in the RMLS under the agent comments and the public comments that says no escalation clauses accepted.
Thank you. Thanks for that. Anything else at this time? Okay, I see. So we can move on to public comment. I think we have one person sign up to speak.
Harlan Burrow and Darren Gustoff.
Would you, you both are coming up?
Yeah, Eric, maybe you want to move over next to Elizabeth, and then they can have this area. And if there's follow up questions, you'll be there.
Welcome back. Just identify yourselves for the record and then give you up to three minutes to be go a little over if needed.
Harlan Burrow with Icon.
Darren Gustoff with Icon Construction.
And we were here basically just to answer any questions you might have on the letter we submitted on Friday, because we kind of laid out a number of the points we feel are relevant as to why you would approve our request to come out for a best and final with the two highest offers.
Okay, so just note, you don't have, just asking if we have any questions, it sounds like.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
We have received your letter and we read your letter.
Yeah, so I don't think we need to go over it all again, but.
Okay. Any questions at this time from the council? I just say, I certainly appreciate the letter. We're in, and we've got two great Westland companies, both competing for the same piece of property. And so we're in a little bit of a difficult situation, and we've had a process that we've gone through. And so I am, so that's kind of where I'm at on the on the issue related to your comments. And I've, so. Yeah, any, anything else from the council? Okay.
Yeah, I guess I would just add with regard to the escalator. I'm not exactly sure how the process would have worked out had we submitted our offer with an escalator. Because we were the highest, they came in above us, we'd come in above them, and where would it end?
Interesting point, for sure. So Darren, please.
I don't really have too much more to add. I just, you did read the letter and based on, I guess I will talk for just a minute. Based on the history of the property and Icon's involvement on the front end back in, when it was first on the market, we had, as you probably know, we were in contract to purchase the property. Went through land use, got land use approvals, were then working on the engineering supplemental, and that did take some time. We were granted, I believe, two extensions to get us through engineering. We were not comfortable purchasing the property until we were through engineering to know what those requirements were to get a true valuation of the property. What surprised us was the request for the third extension was not granted. The city pulled it off the market, and they went and developed it themselves, which we've learned they have the right to do. Haven't seen that in other jurisdictions, but that was the the direction of the prior city manager and the engineer, city engineer at that time. What, and I'll just be honest, that's always been a bit of a sore topic. Doesn't have anything to do today with the offer that's in front of us and what's being discussed, but it does warrant a discussion of transparency and how that came to fruition at that point. Now we come in with an offer, we be an icon that is far and above and beyond the the second place offer and with this escalation clause. They're three hundred and fifty dollars ahead of where our offer was. So what we're asking is an opportunity for both parties or three or four, whoever else wants to bid on the property. I do feel it would be in the city's best interest to allow these to go to bid again with clear and transparent rules that we can all follow and let the the best foot forward come to the best fruition and and outcome for the city. If there are two or maybe more developers that are willing to to compete for this property at at this point, we're still here, we're still very interested, and we feel like we have a really for two reasons that we voiced in that letter, we feel that we should be given an opportunity to do so. And that's why we're here tonight. I appreciate the work that staff's done and and truly trying to do the best for the city, but I I don't think we should stop yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any I guess we'll continue on with the public hearing. You could return to your seats. And I, was that the only speaker? Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, you have a question for him? Okay, sorry, Counsel Bon, please.
Just full disclosure, I think most people know this. I have been a Realtor for ten years myself. Very hypothetically, because we have not discussed this, if it were an option, would you accept a offer of being in a backup position? Is that something you'd be willing to entertain?
Absolutely, if, yes. If the opportunity wasn't to rebid or reoffer, yes, we would, we would hold that position and and see how things fall.
Okay, great. My other question would be, at a certain point, you know, like you mentioned, where does it end? But that could happen anyway, reopening it. We get to a point where it doesn't pencil out for you guys to do a project on a piece of land. So whoever drives it up and ends up with the the top bid may be at that point already and won't know. So what do you have any, any ideas of how we could assure that if if we? that if, if we did something like that, if we accepted a higher offer, we could make sure that's what it closed at? Because otherwise, we might just be in the same position again. And that's.
Well, i- if you were to go out for best and final with no escalation clause, you would receive the best offer.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here and for your partnership on other matters as well.
Thank you.
Let's see, so I don't have a standard operating procedure for this, but I think at this point, there's time for further questions of staff usually. So any other questions of staff?
Yeah, this is where you would normally ask if staff wants to correct anything for the record or make any additional comments in response to the testimony provided. So I think Eric or Morgan, it would be good to come up and speak to some of the comments made about the initial sale.
Yeah, I can, I can go through kind of where our previous project was with the, the sale previously with Icon back in May of 2018. The sale was approved by council with the, the agreement that they would get preliminary plat approval prior to money transfer. Subsequent to the approval of the sale, we had one forty five day extension request, which was approved. We had two thirty day extensions requests, which also were approved by the city. The sale in 2018, as I mentioned, was subject to preliminary plat approval prior to closing. The planning manager decision for the three lot partition was approved on May fourteenth of 2019. So if you remember, it was May seventh of 2018 that the, the listing was closed. So almost a, a year later, we're, we're still working through the process, which is, which is not uncommon. The, the city agreed to additional extensions, addendums in order to allow Icon to perform additional due diligence. Again, not uncommon. July ninth of 2019. So we're, we're a couple of months past planning manager's decision for the three lot partition. Icon requested an addendum to the closing, extend the closing date to September ninth of 2019. The city agreed. July sixteenth of 2019, Icon requested another sixty day extension for further engineering due diligence. Again, the city agreed. August of twenty seven, August twenty seventh, 2019, Icon submitted and paid for our public improvement permit. So this is where the engineering plans come in for review and they pay for a, a public improvement permit. Then Icon requested to move the closing date again to October ninth of that year. Again, the city agreed. So there's a pretty good history of how the project went and the city being agreeable to Icon's request. So that's well, well detailed. Icon, checking my notes here. Icon requested further extensions and addendums in September, again, for further engineering approval prior to the closing date. And that's where the city denied it, past, previous city engineer said, no, we're going to go, we're not going to extend it. And then in October eighteenth, Icon voluntarily pulled their, pulled the project and terminated the sale. So that's kind of the history of how the previous project went. We then subsequently took the land use approval, hired an engineer, designed the public improvements. That took some time. We put it out for bid with a contractor, installed the public infrastructure. And now here we are, several years later, obviously, looking to sell the property. So that's kind of where we are. I don't know if Elizabeth wants to add anything else on, on. She was involved with the previous sale as well. So I don't know if you want to.
I think it, I'm, thank you for that information.
Yeah, and then Eric, I would, you end with your final recommendation to the council before you close the public hearing.
I, I, please, go ahead. And then I have, I have a question for Elizabeth here.
Do, should I do that now or should I wait? Do you want to ask more questions?
Before you close it, make sure you provide your recommendation.
Okay, well, listen, so we're in an interesting situation. We're talking about a real estate transaction in public. All the offers are now public. And I'm trying to figure out as a non-real estate professional, like what to do in the situation. We want to be fair to all parties. And we have two Westland companies that have bid on this. And so like, how do we, what's your recommendation that we do in the situation? How do we maximize value to the city and make sure we're fair to all parties? From your perspective as a real estate professional and you've handled this transaction? So what are our options here?
Now you can hear me. So the process that I was requested to do was put it out to the public. And I wanted it at least five days so that we'd have business days as well as weekend days if it's a private party or a builder. We wanted it to go out to everybody equally. And then lock down communication so that there were no side conversations or inappropriate advantages to anybody over anybody else. So it was really simple for me to get the offers collected after the offer deadline and summarize them with the terms and then come up with a net that I could show how we got there. So it was a very simple, clear process. The market bears and people put, I believe people put their best foot forward in how they presented their offers, how they wrote their offers, specifically when they were submitted. So the first offer that put their best foot forward wanted to use time. They wanted to get it in first because sometimes that makes a difference. And then the second and the third offer, I think they knew, ooh, this is going to be competitive and they waited. And so they didn't want to submit their offers until right before the offer deadline. So offer two came in at eight thirty nine. Offer three came in at nine thirty five. The deadline closed at ten. And then it, it took me a few hours to do the summary. And I double check offers and I try to get all my numbers and my line items in order. And then summarize it so that it's a clear picture and easier for the council to evaluate. So what's different about this sale is that this is published for the public to see. And in a, in a private sale, you have an offer deadline. The seller gets to review with their agent and they say, okay, how are we going to be strategic in a counter response? And it's private and it's locked down. In this situation, there was an offer deadline. I believe people put their offers, their best foot forward, knowing that they, there was a deadline. And then now it's published to the world. So to open it back up again, you've now exposed all the strategy and terms of what everybody did to get to that best foot forward initially. So I don't know how to do that because in private sales, we typically don't pub, you know, publish it and then say, hey, let's start over again. And so that's, my recommendation is to use what was submitted initially because the strategy was clear and there was equal opportunity and move forward with the highest offer.
Thank you for that. Any, Eric, you can give your close and then we'll have council discussion and then.
Sure. So the council options, as we've discussed, are accept the offer submitted by the Portlock Company LLC for eight hundred and twenty six thousand dollars and three hundred and fifty dollars. Sorry. Or two, do not accept the offer and direct staff to continue to market the properties. Staff recommendations would be to recommends the sale of the property to the Portlock Company LLC.
Okay, shall I gavel the, okay, well, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you. Two representatives from Icon for testifying and sharing your thoughts. And you were heard by us. And I'd like to open the floor up to the city council for thoughts or, or discussion on the, on the topic. Councilor Bonnington, go ahead.
All right, so I'll, I'll say that I thoroughly reviewed all the offers, even reviewed the original offer documents, spent a lot of hours looking through all of this and, and speaking with Elizabeth. And I think she carried out a really fantastic process under difficult circumstances, which she kind of explained there. The problem is that when, when you have a situation like this, inevitably someone's going to be disappointed because they're not going to get the property. But it would be extremely unfair of us to put a process out and then deviate from that after it. And that might happen, i- if we set a precedent of doing that, it might happen in a way that, you know, didn't benefit you guys. You might beat the top offer to the Icon gentleman here. I, I feel like we need to stick to the fair process we've put out there and make sure that that's maintained. And do that as a policy going forward, too. Otherwise, we run the risk of making a lot more people unhappy, which is already inevitable. But I don't think I could have done a better job myself devising a strategy for how to do this under that unusual requirement of having to disclose it all to the public and make it as fair as it could possibly be. And I have a lot of confidence in what Elizabeth has done for us here. So thank you for that.
Thank you, counselor. Any other thoughts? Council President Baumgartner, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilor Bonnington, for spending so much time and sharing your experience of, that you have on this topic that I do not have. So I appreciate your perspective. I guess what I see here are, are two main concerns that my thought process is hinging on. Our fiduciary responsibility to the citizens to obtain the best price and our responsibility to conduct a fair and legal process. So those are my two main concerns. And as I see it, staff has given a recommendation. I'm assuming that recommendation that we have in front of us conforms to those two requirements. And I would like to check with the city attorney as to those two points.
Yes, thanks, Council President. I sent you guys, I sent the council a write up of the applicable local rules that apply here in our code for the disposition of real property. And all of those boxes have been checked here in terms of, first, the property has to be declared surplus by resolution. That has occurred and Morgan attached that and sent that to you. Then it becomes within the city manager's purview to determine any reasonable methods for pricing, advertising, marketing, and selling the property, which include working of a real estate agency, which is the option B that staff chose to take here. There are other ways, there are RFP processes and other things like that. But one of the permissible options is to work with the real estate agency. And the most important legal requirements that we have in our code is the notice, proper notice, and the holding of a public hearing, which we're doing here today. So that is what is required. Most important part for you is holding the public hearing before you approve a sale of city property. And as for the real estate terms and the process used, that's where staff would defer to the expert that they hired in terms of how she performed the listing and solicited offers, and then came up with the final recommendation that you have in your packet here.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, Councilor, right, Councilor Groner, any other comments?
Well, basically, I agree. If we went through a proper process and the outcome of that process is a particular winning bid, then we have to go through that for that winning bid.
Okay. Oh, I think he, I couldn't hear what somebody said. If we go through a process, then you have to follow that process with the winning bid. So that's Councilor Groner's comment. Councilor Bonnington, please.
So in, in my, in my estimation, from my experience, what I would want to do here is, first of all, accept the offer that we have, but also offer backup position to Icon. I think that's the most fair thing to do. I'll let Elizabeth explain how that would work and how we could make that happen. But also, I think we've been through experiences where organizations might not have clearly defined written policies about how the actual sale of a property would go. And it would be good in the future if we've developed that. I think basing it on this is great, but we should make sure it's always consistent going forward.
Thank you for that. Elizabeth, would you like to speak to the, would you like to, sorry, I got to get to the microphone here. Elizabeth, would you like to speak to the, what Councilor Bonnington brought up about the potential bet for a backup?
Yes, no, always. Because if anything changes with offer number two, offer number three is ready to go. And it's also a very strong offer. And always, always, always accept a backup offer, yes.
So if we, if the motion was made by the council president to approve the sale to the Portlock Company, would you need to amend that motion to have a backup offered to Icon? Or is that something that could be carried out in the normal course of business?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I've, we have to have a fair process. We have to, and we have, and there's, things are in conflict a little bit in terms of the fiduciary issues with regard to maximizing value of the property. You know, we could open the, the process back up, take more bids and possibly get more money from that. But then we have, we'd be, we'd be abandoning the published process that you went through. And so then you have people upset on the other side of that, whoever doesn't get it through that. And then the person who made this, the officer was contingently accepted by the city for this Portlock Company, and they're also a Westland company. And so I wrestled with this in my head over the last couple of days since we got some correspondence from Icon. And I think that the approach that we're taking is the right one from the sake of, from the standpoint of fairness, even though we could be leaving some money on the table, so.
I, I could make one additional comment on escalation clauses. The reason that some sellers don't want to see an escalation clause is because it can be for an outlandish amount that can't be substantiated. But then it can tie up a property or get their foot in the door, but then never be realized. And so in this case, it is interesting that the numbers came out so close, but because of how they were submitted, it was a very clear communicated process. But that can be the concern. And so if it were to be opened up again, I don't know how to ethically contain how high it could go and how to substantiate that that value would be closed upon at the end. So if that, it, it gets complicated, that might be more an attorney than a real estate agent at that point.
Thank you for that. Any final comments or would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Well, first prefacing it with saying, I admit I had no idea how complicated these transactions could be. So I appreciate everyone's diligence. I move to approve the sale of the property located at six one two three Skyline Drive to the Portlock Company LLC and authorize the city manager to execute. to the Portlock Company LLC and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents to complete the transaction. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the sale of property located at 6123 Skyline Drive to the Portlock Company LLC and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents to complete the transaction. Any discussion? Counsel Bonnington has a question on the motion.
For the city attorney, is it, you concur that we don't need to direct our Realtor to allow Icon to have, do you concur that we don't need to direct our Realtor to offer backup position to Icon?
Well, you know, it's in the record from the meeting that's been recorded. It's always nice to have language in the motion if that's something you certainly want to do. So you could amend your motion to read this through and say, to the Portlock Company with Icon as backup. Is that the proper terminology?
Yes.
And authorize the city manager, this is a very important part, to execute all necessary documents so that John is able to carry out the transaction, not bring all the pieces back to you.
Can I clarify one item? With the backup, that means that it doesn't open up to the public again. It means that Icon secures that position immediately if the second offer were to fall out.
Okay. So would you like to withdraw your second? Or did you have a comment?
Yes. I was just going to say add backup position instead of just backup. And I think that clarifies it.
Yeah.
But yes, I will withdraw my second.
Okay. Counsel President, do you feel like you have what you need to make your motion there?
So did you?
Withdraw your motion first.
Yes, I withdraw my motion. And I would like to make another motion. I move to approve the sale of the property located at 6123 Skyline Drive to the Portlock Company LLC with Icon as backup position and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents to complete the transaction.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the sale of the property located at 6123 Skyline Drive to the Portlock Company LLC with Icon as backup position and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents to complete the transaction. Thank you, Anne, for the parliamentary procedure collaboration. Any discussion?
I would, I would like to make a comment.
I just wanted to appreciate everyone's involvement. And this is, these are difficult decisions when parties have a lot of interest and the long history with this particular property and Icon working with this property. So, but it's always important to me to reduce liability exposure to the city potentially. And so I think this is the best solution we can arrive at at this time, given the set of circumstances. Thank you.
I would echo those comments. And thank you, Counsel President. And thank you. Thank you to everybody who participated in the process and folks from Harlan and Darren as well from Icon for being here. Mark, I'm sure is maybe listening. So appreciate, appreciate you all for your partnership and look forward to continuing to work together. And look glad we can also work with the Portlock Company, another Westland entity in this process. So with that, the motion's been made and seconded. So I will ask the city recorder to call the roll, please.
Counsel President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counsel Groner?
Yeah.
Counsel Bonnington?
Yes.
Counsel Bright?
Yes.
Mayor Belisowski?
Yes. Thank you. So the motion passes. And that the public hearing is concluded. So thank you, Eric and Elizabeth, for all your work. And Morgan as well. I see you sitting back there. A lot of work on project as well. Next, we can go. So would folks like a quick break or are we ready to continue on? Okay, we're going to continue on in the process. Next is agenda item eight B, the utility license and the use of right-of-way. Got ordinance and a resolution. Ordinance 1759 related to utility licenses and the use of the right-of-way, and then resolution 202507 relating to revising fees and charges as shown in the attachment A and updating the master fees and charges document of the city of Westland. So, and on this, I believe we have some public comment as well. Is that correct? Okay. So we'll start with the staff report and then move to the public comment. So. With that, we'll turn it over to Alyssa to introduce the topic.
Thank you, counsel. So as counsel may remember, in 2023, during budget committee discussions, the council and staff were discussing trying to identify potential revenue sources that maybe had not been realized yet and consider ways to stabilize the city's budget needs in the future. One of those opportunities could be to change the Westland Municipal Code that would update and expand the current code to allow the city to capture right-of-way fees. And for current operators, as well as extend usage fees to utility providers. So today, the finance director, Lauren Breitthaupt, and our management analyst, Stephanie Hastings, are here to discuss this opportunity with you. I'm going to just turn it straight over to Stephanie, the one who's been the frontrunner on this all and helping work through it. So thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, Mayor, counsel, council president. Pleased to be back to discuss this issue again and hopefully come to a decision on how we can improve the management of our right-of-way and our access to our fees related to our right-of-way. Do we need to introduce Nancy Warner, who's also here? Also joining us virtually is Nancy Warner. She is our outside counsel. And Nancy is a premier attorney in right-of-way use and telecommunications. She is very active at the national level, as well as has extensive history with advising and working with cities in the Portland metro area. So where, she's been of great service to us. And she is here to answer any legal-related questions that have to do with telecommunications use of the right-of-way. She can do so very succinctly and elegantly in ways that we could only dream to achieve. So. See, have a presentation.
Sometimes that thing is a little bit funny. We'll have, there, I think it maybe, is it working now?
I think so. Let's see. Yeah, we got it.
Okay.
So just a little bit of history. As Alyssa had mentioned, in October of 2023, council requested that staff review chapter 10 of the municipal code. In 2021, council adopted ordinance 1723, and that moved the management of right-of-way utility use from franchise agreements, which most of our utilities are still under because they have either not expired or we haven't made the transition yet because we're waiting to update the code to the license-based program. That, that license-based program came with the 2021 ordinance. We have one utility license currently under that, that is Zively. They were just approved earlier this year. They have applied for permits to do, to put facilities in the right-of-way, but they are not currently, we're not currently realizing revenue from them yet. Still pretty new. Staff have identified proposals related to, let me just get my version of it since subtitles are blocking it. So we've identified proposed revisions related to improvement, improving the management of the right-of-way, adding additional protections, both for cities and utilities, kind of a mutual two-way contract, things that have been provided in our franchise agreements, as well as address the capture of lost revenue and a potential additional revenue options. So the timeline that we have used for the proposed revisions, being June of last year and August of last year, I did an extensive review of utility use of the right-of-way codes surrounding municipalities. From August to October, drafted a revision of chapter 10, reviewed it with internal departments, with Public Works in terms of construction and placement, as well as planning for some things related to wireless placement. And then from October of 2024 to February of 2025, we reviewed and finalized the draft of the proposed chapter 10 revisions with Nancy Warner. In March of 2025, we put it open for public comment. It was posted in local publications, in the Daily Journal of Commerce, the Westland Tidings, for anyone in the public, utilities, community organizations, industry leaders and advisors to be able to review our proposed amendments, make their comments and changes. We received comments both from Verizon and AT&amp;T. We went back and forth and got clarification on those and integrated many of them into the drafts of the code that you see before you today. In the creation of these drafts, we analyzed the existing codes of the surrounding communities. So looked at Oregon City, Tiger, Toowallatin, Gladstone, Milwaukee, Lake Oswego, Beaverton, and Gresham. Identified consistencies, these are pieces of the code that were across all the cities. Everyone had. Borrowed that common language to fill our gaps, what was identified with the help of Nancy Warner, to make our code be, provide more of the protections that our franchise agreements had. We also identified inconsistencies in the code and discussed what those represented, if they offered something to the city that might be useful to us, or if they represented something that was perhaps outdated or not in the city's best interest. We took from those what we thought would best serve the interests of the city and kind of left those out there that we, that gave us any concern or that we felt were outdated. The goal was always to develop a code that was consistent with the surrounding municipalities while optimizing the management and the protections of the right-of-way. So where we're at now, in April, we presented the first draft of the chapter 10 utility use of the right-of-way municipal code amendment. The public comment was received leading up to, during and after that April work session, staff has discussed these public comments from the wireless utility providers and their trade groups with our outside counsel, Nancy Warner. And we are here now with an additional option and the previous option. So you can make a decision based on what you think is, is best for our community. So just to kind of circle back and remind everyone the need for the revisions, why we need to update the code, is that our current code is very bare-bums. It doesn't provide a comparable level of clarification and protection that was provided in our franchise fee agreements. The gaps in the code language present challenges in managing the right-of-way in the best interest of the city. We've already seen this a little bit where we've had some issues in the right-of-way. And we're presented with some challenges on how to get some things fixed. We would like to provide our Public Works staff with more tools in their toolbox to be able to make sure that our citizens are having safe right-of-ways in communities, but our utility providers are also able to provide the critical services needed to our residents.
If you wouldn't mind just briefly, maybe giving some examples of the problems that we've had? Just for the record.
Yeah. And I, you'll, you'll have to forgive me. I do not remember exactly what utility this was worth, was with. But we did have like water that was in conduit that was in the right-of-way. And it happened, I think, during a freeze cycle. So it could have been something, it could have been irrigation-related. Somehow water got into a conduit and it was coming out into the street or onto a property where it wasn't supposed to be. But we didn't have the right protections to be able to address that issue in a efficient way. I do not know if that, how it was resolved.
Thank you.
To be able to address that.
Thank you.
So the gaps that we have in our code language, just kind of addressing that, present challenges in managing the right-of-way in the best interest of the city, as well as providing clarification around remittance and audits that we need to be able to ensure that revenue is not lost as we transition our franchises away into the license program. Our current franchises all have language related to, if we were to do an audit, who would have to pay for it? How often are we allowed to audit? What may we request from them? Our current code has nothing. So if we wanted to do due diligence and make sure that our utility providers are paying, this would be the right-of-way fees that they're entitled, we don't have anything for our licensees to help us collect that. And I do think that is an important next step in our right-of-way review process. An outline of the revisions that are being proposed in the new code is expanded definitions that clarify right-of-way terms. Utility provider registration, right now, we only have the license registration. The utility provider is for utilities that are providing services but do not own facilities in the right-of-way. This would give them a lower cost entry point, lower commitment entry point, to be able to be a part of that process. Utility license clarification around rights granted, our terms and conditions. Clarification around construction, location, relocation, and removal of facilities. Adds language to address least capacity maintenance and vacation of right-of-way. Clarifies fees, payments, and penalties, revises our penalty structure. The penalty that is currently built into our license is 9% of their gross revenues, which is an absurdly high like penalty if something were to go wrong. And so we would like to really see that adjusted to be something that is more realistic and more of a better business relationship with our utilities. Clarify records and reporting requirements at our audit language. Add insurance and indemnification language, which is an important protection for the city, considering it's not in there right now. Add confidentiality language, add severability and exemption language, and clarification around violations. So tonight, are there any questions on any of the history or anything that was in the first round? I know that was like, I just hit you with a tongue.
Thank you for that information. Very helpful. Any questions for, from the council at this time? Okay, you can continue into where we're at.
All right. So tonight, what we're doing is we're presenting an alternative version of the proposed revisions to chapter 10 utility use of the right-of-way. So we have the original ordinance. We're calling that ordinance 1759 underscore one. This was what was presented from the April work session. And then we have version two. This proposed revision has additional language that exempts wireless providers who do not own facilities in the right-of-way. This is outside of small cells facilities. Council may choose to adopt the version of the ordinance that they feel will best serve the interests of the city. So the language, it's a very, very small difference between the code because the wireless exemption is a very, very small part of this code. The bigger picture is providing all the protections that our franchise agreements have. But that language is added in section 10.100 under fees, payments, and penalties. In section five, it adds the exception under five E that a utility provider that does not own any utility facilities in the right-of-way shall not be subject to any right-of-way usage fees for the provision of wireless communication services to customers in the city. So under this exemption, wireless providers who have no facilities in our right-of-way would not be subject to the right-of-way usage fees listed in the master fees and charges. If there are no questions on the ordinances and the differences between the two, I'll move forward to review the changes that were proposed to master fees and charges.
Maybe you could just clarify for the record, based on some of the testimony we received from different groups. You know, for example, Taxpayers Association of Oregon wrote in and was concerned about like what they were calling a stealth tax or a pass-on fee, basically like the city adopting a, a charge that's then passed on to the, by the cellular companies to the consumers, city residents. to the consumers, city residents. Option 2, that exempts the wireless carriers, does not involve that type of a tax. Is that correct? That exempts them from that?
Well, none of the right-of-way usage fees are taxes. That's an important clarification to make.
Thank you.
And I think that there is possibly a misunderstanding that we have kind of heard this word tax come up often in our correspondences and our public comments. And these are the right-of-way fees, they're fees connected to the use of the right-of-way. So they are compensation, not taxes. They're revenue-based, they've been charged in the city or in the state of Oregon for decades. In some cases, some of our older utilities have been paying them for over a century. So they're not new. And if we have specifics related to the Taxpayer Association of Oregon, I think it would be good for our outside counsel, if you have specifics about that, for outside counsel Nancy Warner to answer them. Is there something more specific or would you want like a broader?
Oh, no, no, I just, my, from, my goal is just to, as throughout this discussion, make sure that it's clear to the community that that was, you know, that the narrative doesn't get out there that the city was doing that, is doing that, with what we're adopting tonight, which we're not, so.
Yes.
Because that was, there is some posts on social media and news articles and such out there about that.
Yeah, definitely not a tax and definitely not stealth. As we did have it open for public comment for an entire month in March, as we heard this publicly at the work session in April, as we're talking about this tonight. And because these are fee structures that have been used by municipalities throughout the state of Oregon and have been upheld by the Oregon courts in multiple different instances. I think an important thing for us to remember is that our telecommunications companies, including wireless companies, they do rely on facilities in our right-of-way to provide their services. Thus, they are receiving valuable benefits from the utilization of the city's right-of-way.
Understood. Thank you. Nancy, were you speaking? I didn't know if you had any follow-up, but we can continue.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me tonight. I'll be just very brief. I just want to also add, these charges, if the city does adopt them, are imposed on the providers, not on the residents. So it's not, I don't know exactly what was meant by the word stealth, but you know, Stephanie said this is all done in public and the fees are actually imposed on the providers. They may choose to pass them through to their customers, but that doesn't make it, you know, the city sort of doing some sort of stealth move to tax residents. That's not what's happening.
Okay, Kaylee, you looked like you wanted to jump in there and then we can continue.
Oh, and I was just going to further add to close the loop on your question. That was the initial presentation from staff at the work session. What staff is now recommending tonight is not that at all. They're recommending to exempt wireless providers that don't own facilities in the right-of-way. And so that's completely negating that whole argument and the articles and things you mentioned. So I think probably the staff agenda that was posted last week may not have been read or understood if that's the argument that's still being made because that's not what's being proposed by staff tonight.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions at this point from city council? We continue? Okay, well, let's go into the master fees and charges topic.
Thank you. So I'm going to start with the usage fees. One of the big changes we're going to see in our master fees and charges is separating out usage fees for providers and operators, which are gross revenue fees for the utilities. The gross revenue fee percentages are all going to stay the same. So we're not changing what percentage that rate is at. We're just taking that category and dividing it into two categories where the rates stay identical. We are adding a minimum fee for operators in the right-of-way who have no gross revenue. So if they are still occupying our right-of-way, but they're not making, they're not realizing revenue, they're still paying to occupy that right-of-way. And we're also adding clarification of a small cell fee for wireless providers that this is the FCC permitted, $270 per attachment. We're also going to see changes for registration and permits. Right-of-way provider registration, this is $50, it is an annual fee, while our right-of-way utility license is $250 and that is a five-year fee. That is for operators, while the provider registration is just for our providers. As well as a small cell permit application, which is $500 up to five sites, $100 per additional attachment, and that is also an FCC-approved fee level. These are our current master fees and charges. You can see right now electricity is three and a half plus an additional one and a half privilege tax, so that will be, that's 5% realized. Natural gas is 5%, cables 5%, and an important note, cable is not included in this utility use of the right-of-way code. It's completely separate. Federal regulations require us to keep cable under franchise. Communications is 7% currently. Water, stormwater, and wastewater are all at zero. The changes that we're going to see are the small cell permit application under Sections 8.9 under Right-of-Way Use Permits. In Section 8.15, utility right-of-way use fees, which will become effective on August 13th. We have our $50 provider registration, $250 utility license, and then for our electric, natural gas, communications, water, you're seeing those same amounts, five and seven. Utility operators, same. We're adding language under communications that clarifies that communications, which would be our telecommunications, wireless, and wireline, is 7% not wireless, sorry, wireline, is 7% gross revenue provided that operators whose only facilities in the right-of-way are small wireless facilities as defined in 47 CFR 1.6002. Mounted on structures within the right-of-way and with no facilities strung between such structures or otherwise within, under, or above the right-of-way shall pay an attachment fee of 270 per attachment and then zero for water, stormwater, and wastewater. And what that language under communications means, and I think this is really important in discussions that we've had, is that wireless providers whose only facility is a small cell facility are not going to be charged that 7% gross revenue. As soon as a wireless provider does start installing facilities outside of that small cell in the right-of-way, then they will be subject to the same operator fee, that 7% gross revenue operator fee as all of our other communications utilities are. And then adding the utility operators with no revenue from customers in the city, the $2.75 per line you're put, or the $5,629 per year, whichever is greater. And that's all I have for you. If you have any questions, I would be delighted to answer them.
At this point, maybe we take the public comments? We have a few? How many folks have signed up? Welcome back. Just state your name and city residence and organization if you have one. And do you have up to three minutes?
Hello, my name is Leela Vaga. I am with the Wireless Policy Group and I'm here today on behalf of Verizon. I'm a resident of Portland, Oregon. I'd like to thank you for hearing our testimony. I'd like to especially thank staff and Stephanie Hastings for taking the time to really review our detailed comments. And throughout this process, such consideration of our concerns. And I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that we have seen in the professionalism, especially in things like indemnity insurance language. I mean, we comment on those and people don't say anything. And I really appreciate the attention to detail that has gone into this review. I'm here today to support the Version 2 of the ordinance, so that 1759_2. It does address our concerns, the substantial bulk of our concerns, as represented in the letter from CTIA in Crown Castle dated May 7th. And then AT&amp;T also wrote in on May 6th. And Verizon supports both of those letters. We are a member of CTIA and they represent our concerns fairly well. And we do think that the second version really does address those in a very clean and simple way, frankly, that I appreciate a lot. I want to call attention to a couple of the elements from those letters that are still a concern for us should you choose to adopt Option 1. Just in brief, those letters are very detailed, I'm not going to go into all of it. But just with respect to, we take exception to both the owners and operators of facilities in the right-of-way being charged for the same facility with no additional impact to the right-of-way. Also, federal law does require that fees for wireless communication services be cost-based and a percentage of gross revenue fee is inherently not cost-based. And then we do have a difference of interpretation with regard to privilege tax, especially when the term "use of facilities in the right-of-way" includes being a customer of a fiber provider where we are paying fees as that customer to the fiber provider and then they're being taxed on those fees we're paying them. So those are really the primary issues that I wanted to highlight for you is our concerns with Option 1, that we, again, we do not have those same concerns with the Version 2. Just checking my notes to make sure I'm not missing anything in here, but those are the big things. Oh, yes, and I just also want to point out that while it's true that many jurisdictions in our regions have adopted a license model and language that is similar to what is proposed with respect to the more detailed protections for the city in that model. To my knowledge, there are no fees right now on wireless providers that are percentages of gross revenue for access to the right-of-way. So I just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you for your engagement and involvement.
My pleasure, absolutely.
Next speaker.
Troy Gagliano.
Welcome back.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President, members of the council. I'm Troy Gagliano with Verizon. Do you hear me okay? Thanks for the chance to share a couple ideas with you here this evening. And also kudos to Stephanie and staff for hearing us out. We really appreciate when that happens, thank you. I am with the Government Affairs Team at Verizon. I cover all of Oregon, all the cities and counties therein. So I want to share with you just a couple things tonight. Speak to more overarching issues with our industry. The skyrocketing demand for wireless services and then given the ability to keep up with that customer demand, how Verizon deploys its capital and more importantly, where and when. So first, for growth in the wireless demand, consider these points kind of for context. 90% of Americans own smartphones now. And then interestingly, I think for me, it was 80% of 911 calls are made from wireless. So it just shows how emergency services and public safety also rely on this critical infrastructure too. You add to that telehealth, remote work, et cetera, it's all really increasing demand. In fact, it's a demand like we've never seen before. We've had a doubling of demand for wireless data usage from 2021 to 2023. That's the largest increase in wireless data ever. And Americans are using more in 2020, or did use more wireless data in 2023 than they did from 2010 to 2018 combined. And so we're in a whole new era here, keeping up with custom demand in our industry. So finally, a little bit on how we invest to meet that demand. Just like you as a city have to invest with limited funds on parks, emergency services, all those things, same thing with us. We have to determine how and where to invest. And the important thing I wanted to share with you is that every year Verizon invested about $17 billion in the US alone, keeping up with our sites and our infrastructure. And the important thing there is that those capital budgets are determined at a nationwide level. And just like anything, uncertainty and creative policy ideas cause uncertainty of where the investments will go. We prioritize the cities and the states where the rules are clear and fair. And so in my government affairs role, I collaborate with some engineers and legal team and others to try to figure out who's doing what, where's the path clear and the rules are fair. And so when we kind of get into, you know, creative policy ideas, that's noticed and that can slow down investment. I've seen that, so I just want to share that with you while you consider some of these things. So in conclusion, our wireless demand is growing like we've never seen before and more of that's expected. We're expanding our networks at a great pace to keep those investments projects going, but they're prioritized where the rules are fair and clear. We would support the staff recommendation on Ordinance 1759_2. So again, thank you for your time and for staff's cooperation. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments and continued engagement on this topic.
Ken Lyons.
Mr. Lyons, welcome. Just state your name and city residence and your organization and you have up to three minutes if you need it. Oh, we have a, we cannot hear you, but you're unmuted. You might have to go down to the little mic button at the bottom left where the mute button is, where the dropdown arrow is, and change your microphone input. There.
Can you hear me?
We can now, there we go. A little tech support on the fly from me.
I appreciate it, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council President, and city councilors. My name is Ken Lyons. I'm here tonight to testify on behalf of AT&amp;T. I am a resident of Lake Forest Park, Washington. AT&amp;T provides wireless service today to residents, businesses, and first responders within the city of West Lynn. AT&amp;T's network also hosts the Nationwide Public Safety Broadband Network, otherwise known as FirstNet, which is administered by the FirstNet Authority under the Department of Commerce, providing service in nearly 30,000 public safety agencies, include many in the state and within the county and local agencies in the area. First, I just want to take a moment to express our appreciation that the city responded, has responded to the concerns that AT&amp;T set forth in our May 6th letter and created an alternative ordinance for your consideration tonight. This is the third option of the four options presented in the Agenda Bill Packet. I think it's called Ordinance 1759_2. This version would expressly exclude wireless facilities that do not own facilities in the right-of-way from the right-of-way usage fee. We agree with West Lynn staff's recommendation to adopt the second version as it addresses several concerns we outlined in our previous letter. Among them, as we noted, both in our letter as well as other carriers, the first version, we are concerned would violate federal law, state law, and case law as it relates to these types of fees. We also were concerned about the rationale, the faulty rationale in our view, that wireless carriers must be charged right-of-way use fees in order to be competitively neutral or non-discriminatory. Again, AT&amp;T's facilities are not actually located in the public right-of-way. So it doesn't seem to make sense that they would be subject to gross revenue fees for utilities, you know, compared to utilities that actually do have facilities in the right-of-way. These facilities are not similarly situated under federal law. The theory that taxes or fees should be charged for AT&amp;T's signal traveling through the right-of-way, either over the air or via wireless signals where it's a customer of a fiber provider, is novel and doesn't seem to make sense. It's kind of like saying a customer should pay an additional gross revenue fee to the city for every FedEx or UPS or Amazon package delivered to their house because the trucks drove the vans in the city right-of-way, even if FedEx, UPS, and Amazon are paying usage fees to the right-of-way. So we urge city council to adopt the second version of the bill and avoid the legal challenge of collecting fees or taxes that clearly violate applicable law. We thank you for your careful consideration of our comments and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken, for your engagement on the issue. We've brought two fierce competitors together in the city council chamber, Verizon and AT&amp;T. Can you believe that? That's great. And then I think Skip Newberry has a comment.
Yes, Skip Newberry.
Skip, welcome. Can you hear us? Looks like you might be muted there.
Yes, yep. There we go, perfect. All right. Well, thank you, Mayor, and members of city council. My name is Skip Newberry and president and CEO of the Technology Association of Oregon. And we represent about 500 companies, mostly startups, but also some large established tech companies here in the region, covering all of Oregon. I reside in Portland. And I also submitted on behalf of TAO a letter to the mayor and members of council about our our position on the proposed changes to the code. We would like to urge City Council to adopt the second version presented by staff today. And we don't have anything really that differs much from some of the concerns that were expressed earlier with regard to the original version presented by staff, both in terms of charging both infrastructure owners and wireless providers for the same infrastructure located in the right-of-way, and also providing, charging operators and providers for the same infrastructure. So we feel that the second version presented by staff today addresses the original concerns and would be fine with that as proposed. Happy to answer any questions that members of council have with respect to the original letter submitted. And with that, thanks for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments, Skip. And we received your letter as well. Any questions for any of the commenters today? Okay, so I'm seeing no questions. So we have gotten through the public comments and can proceed in the agenda. Any clarifications from our staff, Director Breithoff, Hastings, anything you'd like to add after hearing the comments? Ms. Kaylee, anything to add before we get into the deliberation phase?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, we have now reached the stage where I will open the floor up to council for discussion or a motion if someone would like to make one.
I can make a motion. And just for your information, Mayor, I'm using page three of our packet, which has the correct language, because the motion needs to refer to repealing the existing Chapter 10.
Yeah, I guess actually I will make a quick comment.
Go ahead.
I don't care if you're first or not. But Stephanie, staff, I just wanted to check with you. In the preloaded motions that council has given, it doesn't note the need to repeal Chapter 10. Just to confirm with you, that has not yet been repealed. Correct?
And we should, well, yeah.
Yes, that's exactly correct. Just confirming with you to go with that staff-recommended motion in your packet.
Here's one thing on this topic of repeal. The ordinance already repeals it. Like, the text of the ordinance repeals section, chapter 10. So the motion is a little bit redundant.
It is a little redundant.
It can go either way.
Staff recommended the repeal and replace language.
Okay. We will go with that. And then we can have a little discussion if anybody has any comments on the proposals.
Thank you for that clarification. I move to repeal the existing Chapter 10 of the Westland Municipal Code and replace it with Ordinance 1759_2 related to utility licenses and use of the right-of-way exempting non-owner wireless, and set the matter for second reading.
Hang on a second.
First reading?
Let me just process this before a second is made, because we need to adopt the, we need to do the first reading.
Am I looking at the wrong one?
No, you're looking at the right one. I just.
What the council president said is correct.
Okay.
That is the first reading.
Okay.
I accidentally said second reading, so.
No, no.
Setting it over for the second.
It was just the difference between the usual ordinance. I was just making sure it met the requirements to do a first reading and adopt it when you're not doing the, just the ordinance number.
Second.
Because, okay, so it has been moved in second to repeal the existing Chapter 10 of the Westside Municipal Code and replace it with Ordinance 1759 Option 2 related to utility licenses and use of the right-of-way exempting non-owner wireless. And that's the first reading and set it for second reading. Any discussion from the council on the issues at play? Obviously, there are some controversies with this issue, and we obviously do have revenue issues at the city. And, but we're going to go with the less risky approach, because I think that's the one that we want to stay out of litigation as much as possible. So, and respect the positions of the wireless carriers that we heard from. Any other comments from the City Council?
I agree with the mayor's comments.
Okay. Seeing none, then you can call the roll.
Counselor Groner? Counselor Bonnington?
Yes.
Counselor Bright?
Yes.
Counselor President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Mayor Bielesowski?
Yes. So the first reading is adopted unanimously, so we can proceed to the second reading.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to repeal the existing Chapter 10 of the Westland Municipal Code and replace it with Ordinance 1759_2 related to utility licenses and use of the right-of-way exempting non-owner wireless.
Second.
Oh, and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved in second to repeal the existing Chapter 10 of the Westside Municipal Code and replace it with Ordinance 1759 Option 2 related to utility license and use the right-of-way exempting, use of the right-of-way exempting non-owner wireless.
And adopt.
And adopt the ordinance. This is the second reading. Any discussion after the first reading? Nobody wants to make any comments, okay? We could call the roll, please.
Counselor Bright?
Yes.
Counselor President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Groner?
Yes.
Counselor Bonnington?
Yes.
Mayor Bielesowski?
Yes. So the ordinance is adopted. Thank you.
Skip.
And I want to just take a moment. Very quickly, I have to recognize Stephanie Hastings, who's a Westland resident, and she put a lot of work into this and became an expert in right-of-way management. And we're grateful to have you on our team. And I think that the ordinance will be good. And I know that there's, we got a lot of the testimony comments today that we've made, where our focus was on the wireless carriers, but this is essential for our city from the standpoint of the other, the non-wireless providers. There's a whole section of the ordinance related to that, and we're going to be modernizing our code for that. So I don't want to get lost in the issues related to the wireless exemption versus not. So thank you for all your work. And Kaylee Klein as well, putting a lot of work on the back end. Then we have our external team member Nancy Werner, who is the legal expert for the region on these issues. A totally new area of law for us all, I think.
And Mayor and Council President, I just have one more procedural note for you to close out this matter. So given that you did approve and adopt the ordinance, the final step would be to adopt the resolution with the master fees and charges that apply. And that is in the motion packet.
I see it here.
Resolution 2025-07.
Go ahead.
Thank you, City Attorney. I move to adopt the resolution 2025-07, revising fees and charges as shown in Attachment A and updating the master fees and charges document in the city of West Lynn.
Second.
It's been moved in second to adopt Resolution 2025-07. Sorry, I take back my motion sheet. Revising fees and charges as shown in Attachment A and updating the master fees and charges document in the city of West Lynn. Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, we can call the roll, please.
Counselor President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Groner?
Yes.
Counselor Bonnington?
Yes.
Counselor Bright?
Yes.
Mayor Bielesowski?
Yes. So the motion passes and Resolution 2025-07 is passed, along with Ordinance 1759. So I was a little premature in thanking everybody. Any other comments from the council on the topic of the right-of-way license fees?
Not necessarily. Just agreeing with everything you said about the hard work of staff. And I also appreciate the people who gave us public comment and input so that we can all work together and create the best policy possible for the community. Thank you.
I think we did that. We have a good policy that we adopted today. So thank you, Council President. With that, thank you Director Breithoff as well overseeing the process. We will move on, and we're going to keep you up here, Director Breithoff. Stephanie, you are excused from the City Council, unless you want to stick around for a moment. We've got Ordinance 1764 relating to the collection of the transient lodging taxes, the TLT. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This one will hopefully be a little bit easier than the last one. This is a pretty simple change that we're making tonight. As you will probably remember, we've made quite a few changes to our transient lodging tax municipal code. And a lot of our changes are so that the Oregon Department of Revenue can do the collection piece for us and take that role on. And the council has already approved the IGA with the Oregon Department of Revenue. However, they have come back to us and realized that in our code, we have language about collecting monthly, and it needs to be changed to collect quarterly, because they collect on a quarterly basis versus how we collect on a monthly basis. So that is what this ordinance is doing. We are changing it from monthly to quarterly collections, and so that they can collect from us, for us. Happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions from the City Council? Okay, well, I don't see any questions. So we can move into the motion sheet for these two readings.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve first reading for Ordinance 1765 relating to the collection of transient lodging taxes and set the matter for second reading.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the first reading for Ordinance 1765 relating to the collection of transient lodging taxes and set the matter for second reading. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none. Please, call the roll.
Counselor Bonnington?
Yes.
Counselor Bright?
Yes.
Counselor President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Groner?
Yes.
Mayor Bielesowski?
Yes. So the first reading is approved, and we can go to the second reading.
I move to approve second reading for Ordinance 1765 relating to the collection of transient lodging taxes and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the second reading for Ordinance 1765 relating to the collection of transient lodging taxes and adopt the ordinance. Any discussion? Come on, everybody. I have to ask a question, or else there's some procedural hawks who will write in, I bet you. Okay, no discussion. So please, call the roll.
Counselor Bright?
Yes.
Counselor President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Groner?
Yes.
Counselor Bonnington?
Yes.
Mayor Bielesowski?
Yes. Thank you. The ordinance is passed.
Thank you.
So now we've gotten through our major business tonight. We've got two major ordinances passed, resolution, disposed of some city property. And now it's time for the City Manager Report from Alyssa Preston, who's sitting in for John, who's out on vacation.
He is. Good evening. As you had mentioned earlier tonight, we had the Old Town Fair at the Willamette Park this last weekend. And so I wanted to give a special thanks to our Parks and Rec Department for their hard work on that fair, putting on the fair, and also the collaboration with Public Works and the Police Department to make that fair a success. Their department's dedication, creativity, and teamwork brought this event to life, and it would not have been possible without them. So I wanted to give them kudos. Just a reminder that Music in the Park will be starting. They get a brief reprieve for about 10 days, and then the Parks and Rec Department will be starting at Music in the Park starting July 24. It is five Thursdays at 6:30. You'll have live music, food, drinks, admission and parking are free. And the other items I wanted to talk to you about are your next meetings. Just wanted to confirm with you, you do have a meeting currently scheduled for July 21, next Monday. We only have one agenda item right now. That is the State of the District Report from Wes. So just wanted to confirm if you're okay with rescheduling him.
We will likely reschedule him. So again, since there's no other agenda topics on that, on that agenda item, unless there's any objection from the council, anybody wants to meet. Okay.
Then we will cancel next.
Yeah, we'll cancel next Monday, then we'll, next meeting can be our August.
August 4.
Yeah.
Yes, August 4 at 6:00 PM.
Sounds good. And just for the council's knowledge, when we had our meeting earlier today, when I had my meeting with staff, I talked about having a, just kind of a meeting of the Westland Urban Renewal Agency as part of the August 4 meeting with our consultant Elaine Howard, to kind of just, for two reasons. One, to talk about the feasibility study for Highway 43. And two, the main purpose of the meeting is just to get an urban renewal 101. We have this district that's starting to accrue revenue. What is the power of it? What can it do? And how do we use it as a city? And so I'm looking forward to that discussion. And I think Mr. Williams will be back for that.
He will. And stop her reaching out to her to see if she can come.
So as long as Elaine can be there. If not, we can move it to September. But I thought it was something that we should familiarize ourselves with, because it is a tool that's worked well in other cities. And we're talking about doing an urban renewal district for 43 and getting that process going. So anyway, that's my flag for that agenda. Other than that, we have some other agenda items on that, tentative agenda for August. And then, of course, that's our, we traditionally have one meeting in August and then have the City Council recess. So that's my update. Anything else from, the Council President may have had a question or comment on that.
Just for that meeting agenda for August 4, it comes to my mind that we had a request from CCI in the public comment today about a desire to get some direction. And potentially, maybe we could utilize some of the remaining time to do their wishes, which was to get the word out about neighborhood associations. So if we could.
I think that's on the agenda for the.
It is on the agenda, hopefully for CCI, and I believe Sustainability Advisory Department to have the work plans.
Thank you so much.
Anything else, Ms. Preston from the Acting City Manager?
No, that's it.
Okay. And any, we don't have a City Attorney Report book. Do you have any report tonight? Okay. Well, seeing nothing else, this was Counselor Groner. We are going to let you go so you can enjoy the sunset at Cannon Beach. We've gotten you out in time. I think you're going to be able to see it. So glad, thank you for, thank you for being here. And thanks to all the council for your service and volunteerism. We get to dive into a lot of different topics as a city, whether it's real estate sale, right-of-way code, et cetera, transient lodging tax. The next week it'll be housing, some sort of housing land use application. It's crazy, the breadth. But we are all learning a lot and doing our best. And so thank you, everybody. We are adjourned. See you in August. Good night.